Thank you. Roll call, Miss Buck.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Colville Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Sepora? Mr. Baldwin?
Here.
Ms. Beatty? Mayor Walker?
Here.
Mayor President?
May I have a... May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and bills for the month of September two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
Barb, since Mike isn't here, is anything outside the budget?
No, there's nothing outside the budget for last month.
Thank you, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time, we have a citizen's request of the meeting. I ask that you limit your discussion to items that are on the agenda, and we'll have an open forum at the end of the meeting. Please state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three to five minutes. Thank you.
James Miller, one twenty-seven East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe, here. I have a couple of items. Want to see on the police department's agreement. I'm just wondering if all the council members have read the agreement, since they're going to be voting on it tonight. Also, within this last week, we've had two farmhands killed in fires in St. Louis, Missouri. And I just wanted to express my thanks to the fire department, the firemen, and the policemen, police department, for all that they do, because sometimes we forget what a great job they do and what danger they're in. And within the, with the recent, well, not recent, but a couple of years, I guess, we've had some arson, several arsons in Latrobe that, I guess, still haven't been determined what's going on yet. But I think it's, I hope that we find out what's going on and hopefully can save some lives of either firemen or citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. And you're absolutely right. We should do it every day. We should thank our firemen or police and all of our first responders who put themselves in harm's way every day. So, John, Jack, Mr. Bolton, I know you're a fireman. Anyone else here that I'm missing that's a fireman or a first responder? Fabian, oh yeah, sorry, thank you, you too. We thank you for your service. Anyone else want to speak?
Hi, everybody. Mine's Elizabeth Puckner, and I'm here on behalf of Scotty G's. We've had some recent changes with our dumpster situation, and we were... We were, our dumpster was in the same area for the last eighteen or twenty years, and I'm understanding there's an ordinance that it has to be placed where it is all of a sudden. And I'm curious to see that ordinance, and if there isn't one, I just would like to say that we do have a letter from a business owner saying that it is impeding its business with the dumpster right there. There are some issues with the dumpsters being moved by people that aren't supposed to move them. And basically, I just would like to see if there is an ordinance, and that would be all I really need.
Thank you. From what I know, and Wayne, correct me if I'm incorrect, but there is a specific spot where that dumpster is required to be. I think in the past, because there haven't, there hasn't been another business there, we've kind of just let it go. Now that there is another business there, the dumpster really should be in its right spot. Wayne, would you like to clarify that? And I'm sure Mr. Kelly, I don't know what you, do you know exactly what ordinance get or pop you out or...
Well, she'd like to know a copy of any ordinance, because we have a written request, too. She can fill that out. She's certainly welcome to do that. As far as the location of the dumpster, that's where the garbage company puts it. It was being moved by someone, I'm not sure who, I don't really care who, but it was being moved from the location where it was placed by the garbage company. We're asking to put it back where the garbage company places it and leave it there.
Rosie, if I remember right, we sat here in a council meeting about eighteen years ago, but...
I wasn't here that day.
No, no. Well, I do remember. I remember this whole situation, that we didn't have nobody in the other buildings. So, we left him, go ahead and move it. That was not to be permanent. That was, well, nobody else was around. But now we have other businesses there. I understand it should go back to where it's at.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we move it so that they, so that they could park back there?
Right.
And, and we kind of, and I don't know, are they allowed to park in the alley at all? That's the ordinance. It's not the ordinance, I think the ordinance that you're, that you're talking about. There isn't an ordinance, I don't believe, as to where your garbage needs to go, but there's prob, but I believe there's an ordinance about parking in the alley.
Right, there's no long-term parking in the alley. As far as for the pizza delivery people or people loading and unloading, that's not, never been an issue, and that's allowed. It's the permanent parking of a person's vehicle, and the reason the dumpster was moved was a lot of room for it. And the reason it's got to go back is that it never was really authorized to park there.
Yeah, and I kind of remember this, because I think it came up, it's come up since I've been, I guess I've been here long enough. But, and so, I mean, I think we, you know, as always, we want to be business-friendly. You know, you guys have a great business in this town. We want you to stay. We want you to feel, you know, welcome. We also have to take into account that we now have a new business there as well. So, where we were able to accommodate you in the past, I don't think we're going to be able to continue to do that because of, because of the other business. So, let's try to work it out so that, you know, everybody can operate their businesses successfully. It's, it's in the best interest of everyone in the town.
Thank you. I would just also like to say that I'm not aware, I've tried calling the health department, and I don't know if the dumpster has to be seventy feet from an entrance to a restaurant or within their ventilation system, as well as, what else was I going to say? As well as, oh. You people would know more about than I would. Like, as I look down certain alleys with businesses, I do not see, like, when you park on a street, it has to be so far from the end of the intersection. Wouldn't it be so with something parked in an alley so far from an intersection? I don't know the laws about that. But it is like, as people turn and come into there, it makes it very narrow, and it backs up traffic at times. So, I don't know if there are, like, health department codes or other codes, you know, you have to have something so far from the intersection as well. So, we could look into that. I would really appreciate it, because it might make a difference of where it goes, because he really doesn't want it there, and if it does make a difference, and...
Who doesn't want what there? You don't want the dumpster where the garbage company is placing it?
The garbage, the garbage people placed it elsewhere for a really long time, and it was moved by someone else originally. And we moved it back to where the garbage people did put it for seventeen years. But now, it's under our windows with the ventilation system close to our entrance. And it's, we don't want to have any health code violations because of it, which I did contact them. They, I'm waiting for a return call on that. And it's so close to the road and the intersection.
Right, but you can't, but you also can't, your dumpster can't block someone else's property.
I, I'm aware of that.
So, I mean, there's not, we're going to find, I mean, I can't speak for the health department. I don't know if there is any kind of stipulation there. Wayne?
The problem is going to be when the other business gets their dumpster. Scotty G wouldn't appreciate if they put it on their property. And, but that's what you're doing by putting it on their property. The other issue is, you have a grease trap contained, and your dumpster is right next to it. That's why it's there. All your e-grease trap and all the garbage is all in one area. It's all in the, in the area where it's supposed to be.
Also, too, as the addresses fall on Ligonier Street, Francesca just has a little dumpster, which is in front of the other dumpster property as we speak. So, as the addresses go, like, as you come down the alley, her address is before her ours. So, you would think her dumpster would be first, then ours, then his. I'm not sure how that works either. But her dumpster, which is, like I said, just a can, is in front of his property as we speak. So, there are, there's just certain issues that we're just trying to solve, and we have valid points, I think.
Well, I agree, except that you can't, you know, we, you can't put your property on somebody else's property. I mean, it's really that simple.
And for longer, it turned out dumpster was blocking the second floor egress side of the building. So, they couldn't even bring the stairs down to get out of the building. Just someone happened in there during a fire. That's a fireproof violation.
What's the problem with it being exactly, what's the problem with it being there? You're concerned it's a health code violation?
It's within our ventilation system, and the odor product comes right into our...
Well, how will we know what we're going to do about that?
Well, I can, I can get, like I said, contact the health department, find out if there is anything. And also, like, our property has been moved from in front of his building, and I get that.
Can't the dumpster go where the car's parked?
That's where it is.
Okay. All right, well, again...
But someone else's property is in front of his building, and there's not an issue with it, is what I'm saying.
Well, but the prob, well, and that's, that's for the other, I mean, if the other person allows that, I don't know what the situation is there. The problem is that the new business needs that access to their property.
And I've been there and noticing, and I know it's not my business to notice, he can come there whenever he wants because he owns the building. I've seen nobody in that alley for that building at all.
He tried to park on it some day at night, and he couldn't get to the door because there was a beamer parked in front of the door. So, they did come at different times of the evening.
Yeah, I mean, it, regardless, it's their building, it's their property, you know, we have to respect that, and I appreciate that. An ordinance for what?
For the dumpster. Like, it's a sick, okay, I have a letter from Wayne Jones, whoever's moving his dumpster from the place where the garbage company places it to down the alley be warned. Dumpster is moved, any car parked in this alley will be taken, could be took. I mean, he said that that was the place where the garbage company is supposed to put it.
Right.
Figured out all, like, I would like to see that.
What I said was you're in violation of the parking ordinance.
Yeah.
I didn't say you're in violation of any dumpster ordinance. Parking ordinance clearly states that, except for delivery and pickup, a car is not supposed to be parked there. And as you know, that, the one car in particular is parked there all day long.
Um, what I'm saying...
Is there a parking pass for any of your cars?
He actually has a parking pass.
Right, parking lot?
He has been locked.
Right. So, he has a parking pass. He knows he's only not supposed to be there, then, because he bought a pass to park in the lot.
Um, what I'm saying is, um, not about the parking of the cars. I'm saying the placement of the dumpster.
Yeah, and, and we don't have an ordinance that talks about where the garbage, where the placement of the dumpster is, but you can't put your property on someone else's property.
So, we can put it anywhere in front of our building. That's okay. But can we move it to where would be better for us in front of our property?
You can do that. You're just interfering with your own delivery drivers, because then they can't park.
Well, we'll work something out.
But as long as it's on your property and not blocking the alley...
Right. It can't block the alley or impede others from using it, and if whoever Francesca's thing is in front of or beside, they don't care. We don't care. But at this point, it's...
It's a very small can.
Yeah, it's the difference between a can and a dumpster, so...
I said that, yeah.
Yeah, you did say that. Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate you being in town, and you guys have a great business, and we want, we all need to get along, and I actually think that this new business could, could be very beneficial to your business as well.
We need our, yes, we send pizzas over to the art center for the cavalry.
Right, right. So, we just have to find a way to work it out together.
We basically just wanted to know, like, basically if there was any favors being done.
No, I guarantee you that's, well, we are, we are going to treat all of our business, we want as many businesses in this town as we can possibly get, and we will treat them all fairly and the same way. There is no special preferential treatment for new businesses versus long-term businesses. Yes, Wayne?
If they, whoever, the newsstand, the, when newsstand part is off the alley, but if anyone's parking their car long-term throughout the day, they run the risk of that, I can take it, regardless of which business it is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
I'm done. I can go?
Sure, you can go. This is in prison. You can go whenever you want.
You said an open forum later, but I guess we kind of had it now.
Well, yeah, but that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any committee reports? Finance, Madeline, anything?
No.
Public safety, Jerry?
Daywood Watch Meeting, November second, six thirty. Come and bring your friends. We have Michelle Grant from the Westmoreland County Children's Bureau talking about the mandated reporting of child abuse in Latrobe. So, bring your friends, bring your names, come one and all.
Thanks, Jerry. Personnel committee, Trish, Trish, anything?
Just that we're going to vote on the new police contract tonight, so...
In answer to Mr. Miller's question, I think we've all had a chance to review it. I know I was part of the negotiation, so I think everybody's aware of what's in it, right? Public works, Jerry, anything?
No.
All right. Community development, Fabian, Trish, nothing?
You know what? I'd just like to remind everybody of the electronics drop-off the last Saturday of the month, I believe. No, the twenty-fourth, from eight to twelve.
I think that's what it is.
Down at the stadium, so bring all your old junk, all your old electronics, all your old TVs and computers and whatnot.
Um, okay. Any board authority reports? No. I think we have the minutes from LMA in our packet. We have the minutes from Parking Rec. The next Parking Rec meeting, I know, is Thursday at four thirty. They're typically in the green room, because there's usually not a lot of people. There's chairs in there if people come in, but it's usually not a lot of people. I think they can move it here if it gets busy. I wouldn't be there, so I'm going to try to make it, but I don't know when we can get there. Okay, department works. Where in the heck is everybody at? Joe's on vacation. Where's Jim?
Jim's in train.
Okay. Anne, you're it. Oh, John's here. I'm sorry, John. There you are. Sorry, John.
I was hiding.
Chief Brazili, I just recognized you a little while ago. I know you're there. Took my glasses off. What, anything, John?
Uh, nothing real impressive. We, as a department, went out to Lake Harmony, PA, the end of September for State Farmers Convention, and we took first place in our division for Marching Champs, and the band actually took third.
Congratulations. That's wonderful.
So, we brought two more trophies home, and...
Nice.
It was, it was a good time.
That's good. Congratulations.
Thank you. That's all I have.
You have Halloween coming up, right?
Yeah, we, we got that covered.
Okay.
We got a bunch of rules going to take care of that.
Anne, anything?
I have no report.
Anything, any news on our house project up there on, is that Fairmont?
Walnut.
Walnut?
Yeah, he's on a notice. It's a long notice. I gave a reasonable amount of time to get the...
But they were, but he is coming up.
He goes, everything like that's fine. It's just the house now.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on the agenda is under the Administration of Finance Department. It is an ordinance which has been duly advertised. I'm going to highlight it. It's, it's ordinance repealing ordinance number nineteen ninety-three four, providing that in exchange, or that in certain fire losses, the insurance company, association, or exchange shall transfer insurance proceeds to a designated officer of the City of Latrobe as a portion of the insurance proceeds to be held in security against the total cost of removal, repair, or securing the damaged building, providing for fees, providing for penalties for violation, and setting forth procedures and requirements pertaining to such insurance proceeds and to the implementation of said legislation in the city. We have had this ordinance since nineteen ninety-three. We're basically repealing it and reenacting it with certain changes. What we have discovered over the years is that for every fifteen thousand dollars of a claim, the insurance company is supposed to pay two thousand dollars to the city to be held in escrow. A claim being the amount it would cost to repair or refurbish a structure that was damaged. Upon completion of the repairs and refurbishing, we would then release those funds back to the property owner. However, we did find that contractors are often not being paid. So, this ordinance now amends the previous ordinance to include proof that all contractors have been paid with regard to the refurbishing of the property. Also, there was nothing in the previous ordinance that provided for the payment from these funds for any delinquent taxes or assessments. And so, the ordinance now is being amended to include provisions that would require that all taxes, assessments, water bills, sewer bills would be paid before the funds would then be released back to the property owner. So, those are the two major changes: payment of contractors, payment of taxes, liens, and assessments from the security fund before releasing the balance to the property owner. The proper motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Kelly, well, there, if they do not pay their taxes or any of those liens, will that come out of the two thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Miss Buck?
This is ordinance two thousand fifteen seven. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Colville Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Good as five, yes.
The next item under the Administration of Finance Department is a resolution. It's entitled authorizing purchase of additional electronic message center. And I therefore be resolved that the council of City of Latrobe hereby authorizes and approves the purchase of a nineteen-millimeter, full-color, three-foot-by-six-foot electronic message center with non-illuminated identification sign for a total cost of materials and installation of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Also, the purchase shall include a signed topper utilizing the Charlie logo and words "The City of Latrobe," Section Two, and a contract is hereby awarded to R.K. Neon Company for the sale to the city and purchased by the city of the above described for a total contract price of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And Section Three requires that the mayor, city manager, or city secretary are authorized and directed to take any and all action and sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Basically, we're buying the back of the sign, and so you can see it both directions now. And the topper. We're buying the topper as well.
Is this a motion or an ordinance?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, okay.
Motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
What he said. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Madeline. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Jones, is this in the budget?
Actually, actually, my dress.
I was hoping someone else had a question.
No, it's not, but maybe it was the sixteen thousand dollars revenue to cover it. Uh, this is, about two and a half years ago, there was an issue with a hospital, and it's taken two and a half years to get the money with the mayor's help and with the people from the hospital's help to get it out of the council. We have sixteen thousand dollars that we've been able to recoup, and that's the way it's being used to cover the sign.
So, it's not going to put us over budget on any line item?
No, it's a wash, because we brought in sixteen that was not part of the budget, and the rest went thirteen, which is not part of the budget, basically.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask one question. Has this thing been successful as far as other people using it to advertise?
I would speak more for Barb, but I think Barb gets, gets kept busy with, at least on Friday.
It's steady. But we get a lot of churches, it seems like. You know, it's not big money, no businesses yet, so if there's any businesses, maybe the city manager can work out a better bill than what's in the office for...
I mean, I did notice a lot of the churches advertising for their thing.
And it's a good public service announcement, and I see the firemen, you know, I would...
Yeah, the sub sales.
When your sub sales are, and I'll tell you what, we, my dad and I set our watches by this sub sale. My dad's like, okay, so, yeah, so it's a good public service announcement, nothing else, and I think eventually you'll see, you'll see more of the businesses popping up there.
I think it's growing. It's growing.
Yeah. Any other questions? Miss Buck? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Trish.
Did you bid this out? Is this the best bid you got?
Well, basically, originally, but this is the other half of the sign. So, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're fine, I can...
The, we're kind, we're really have to go with R.K. Neon, because the controller, which we don't have to buy, is already theirs, you know, the same company. So, really, just, when we bought the first half, we talked about buying the second half down the road.
And they didn't want to give you half off?
They gave me a little bit off. I've been try, I, I even got two hundred dollars off the sign topper. I mean, I do try to save money where I can.
That be seen on both sides?
Yes.
Both double-sided.
Nice, nice, very nice, yes.
Yeah, we, we were able to knock two hundred bucks off of that. I knocked a little bit off of the other sign. We, we try to get a praise whenever we can.
He will do.
I will tell you, I was in a, I was in, I spoke up at the Wingate one time to some people commenting that were from out of state, and they, they were commenting about the fact that they didn't know when they were or weren't in Latrobe. We don't have a lot of, a lot of signage, so, signage, so, I mean, this is one of the major gateways into town, so I think it's, I think it's great. All right, Miss Buck?
This is resolution two thousand fifteen thirty-seven. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Colville Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Good as five, yes.
The next item under the agenda is a police department ordinance, and it's entitled amending Chapter fifty-six vehicles and traffic. Section two fifty-six, Schedule Roman numeral five, parking prohibited at all times, and Schedule two fifty-six fifty-four, permit parking. In essence, council recalls about two or three months ago, we did pass an ordinance on Grand Street, and at that point, we created, we eliminated the prohibitive parking on the south side, and we created permit parking for both. After much discussion with, with Mr. Bush, it was determined that perhaps we should have kept the permit parking because, or the no parking, because the street is a fairly narrow street, and by parking on both sides, it's, it may create some problems, particularly in the wintertime. So, what this ordinance does right now is it goes back and changes Grand Street. It extends it from Harrison Avenue on the east to the first alley, which would be east of Ligonier Street. So, it does extend it, but it reinstates the prohibitive parking on the south side of Grant. It also prohibits parking on the west side of Anderson Street. Now, you may ask, why that? The problem that has occurred in the Grand Street area occurred because of a business there that is doing bodywork on vehicles, and they would park vehicles on the street, thus taking up parking spaces for residents. They're also moving these vehicles down to Anderson Street. So, what we're trying to do is regulate the parking there. So, the first part of this ordinance reinstates prohibi... So, the first part of this ordinance reinstates prohibitive parking prohibited at all times on the south side of Grant and includes it on Anderson Street between Monroe and Wagon. Permit parking then is on the, okay. We're deleting the north side and south side of Grand Street for permit parking. And now, what we are doing in this ordinance is we are putting permit parking on the north side only and Anderson Street on the east side between Monroe and Wagon. So, it is hoped that this will then attempt to control the problem there with the parking of business vehicles on the street, taking up the spots of the residents. That's what we're intending to do. There was some discussion at our agenda session about having a section of this ordinance to establish rates for on-street meters and so forth, but that has been pulled for further discussion. So, right now, we're only dealing with the parking issue in the Grand Street area.
So, may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor? Can I have a motion? No one's going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Questions? Discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2015-8. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Colville Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Notice five, yes.
The next item also appearing under the Police Department is a resolution, and it's entitled approving an agreement with the Latrobe Police Department for a collective bargaining agreement to extend from January first, two thousand and sixteen, through December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen. And basically, that's what the resolution does, it approves that collective bargaining agreement. And I'm sure Mr. Jones can speak more to the agreement than I can, if there are any questions.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that one.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? The only comment that I would like to make is that I appreciate the hard work of Wayne and also the representatives from the FOP and our local police department. I don't know if many of you know this, but for many, many years, these things always ended up in binding arbitration, and for the last couple contracts, we've been able to avoid that cost by meeting and negotiating. As you all know, we've got a great group of officers here at Latrobe, so, and Wayne, you did a great job with this. So, I was part of the negotiations part of the time, but they went very, very smoothly. Any questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015-38. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Colville Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
I'll give his name.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Notice four, yes, one uptake.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're now in the Public Works Department, and there are going to be two resolutions. The first one is a resolution, and it is entitled authorizing the execution of a cost allocation agreement to the nineteen seventy-three service agreement. This pertains, both of these resolutions pertain to the Act five thirty-seven update plan, which you know, we've been involved with litigation with the Environmental Hearing Board involving Unity Township, Unity Township Municipal Authority, Dairy Township, Dairy Township Municipal Authority, our own authority, and Youngstown Borough. We have finally, it would appear, come to agreement on all matters, and when I say agreement, agreement by all of the engineers, as to the Act five thirty-seven update plan. There are still some issues to be resolved with Youngstown Borough, but they will be resolved, I would like to think, through agreement, and if not, through the decision of the Environmental Hearing Board on an appeal, they probably, they're not involved in that appeal. Basically, the cost allocation agreement provides for a cap for Unity Township for the repairs, for lack of a better word, to our system that need to be made to prevent infiltration. Their cap, and I don't have the number exactly, but it's, I believe it's twenty-four million dollars would be their cap. Our engineers are of the opinion that the, and I should say that the costs of these repairs are spread out among all the municipalities by percentage basis, and there's never been any dispute about that. So, our engineers are of the opinion that, that the repairs that need to be made can well be made, basically holding tanks, and we've talked about that before, can well be made at a figure which will keep Unity Township under their cap. So, they seem satisfied with that. This cost allocation agreement will then become a codicil or an attachment to the nineteen seventy-three service agreement between the various municipalities I just described and their authorities. So, first, this resolution approves the cost allocation agreement. The next resolution, I'll just explain it now, so I don't have to do it then, approves the consent ordering agreement. The consent ordering agreement is essentially, provides for the, again, repairs by installing the holding tanks to hopefully alleviate the infiltration in the system. This agreement says, here's how it's going to be done. This one says, the first one says, here's how it's billed, will be paid for. So, we have two resolutions to pass. The first one would authorize the execution of the cost allocation agreement, and the motion would be to adopt that resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution of the cost allocation agreement?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Kelly, this is to your liking?
Yes.
Has LMA?
More importantly, it's to LMA.
Has LMA approved it? Their meeting's next week.
Their next week, I think Dairy Township has already approved.
I saw that in the paper.
It's just a matter of the...
Timing?
Timing.
But LMA, you spoke with LMA's solicitor, and they're, they're, your belief is that they're final?
Well, absolutely. We were at a meeting at the Department of Environmental Resources about a month ago, and basically, we came out very satisfied that we were all in agreement. UTMA has already approved it, so it's ATMA.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015-39. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Colville Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Notice five, yes.
The second resolution then is its companion, which then authorizes the execution of the revised consent order and agreement, which again, provides for the, basically, for the multiple, possible multiple holding tank, resolution to the infiltration issue.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution on the consent order and agreement for the Act five thirty-seven plan? Thank you. Trisha, second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Fabian, any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015-40. Mrs. Colville Cragan?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Notice five, yes.
Okay, that's it for the agenda items, do we have any unfinished business?
Yes, Rosie, me. Mr. Boomer and Mr. Bush last month said about the Jersey barrier over there, and said they had no problem with that moving there.
Yeah, I talked to, Mr. Kelly and I talked about this over the last week or two. We're going to send, I don't know if we've sent it yet, okay?
We sent an email out to WCC and to the road, notifying them that on, I forget what day it was, the fifteenth of November or whatever, we're opening up the road. So, they're aware of it. I wanted to give them a, on case there was an issue, they have thirty days to respond. I saw someone going down there yesterday.
Going down where?
That road. Yeah, people, people drive around the barrier and land.
Yeah. So, barring any unforeseen issues, it'll be only on fifteen.
I'm sorry.
What?
You know what I did see, honestly, if you're coming up by the college there, did you notice how flat the curb is?
Which direction?
At the sidewalk?
Where?
If you're coming up Jefferson Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a pencil pen in that? Do you know, people are cutting, cutting in there left and right, I mean, they're just cutting right on, they just go right up on the sidewalk again.
Okay, any other unfinished business? Any new business? We're gonna do, yeah, I wanted to ask, under new business, I think you guys are all aware that on Monday, October twenty-sixth, the Chamber of Commerce is having their annual dinner, and one of the recipients of the Community Service Award, what's he, what is that, Mr. Grubbs?
That one is nonprofit here.
No, no, Mr. Grubbs, no, Mr. Grubbs.
Small Business of the Year from that startup.
Ice Cream Joe, what's his?
He is a community service.
Okay.
They have five, they have five.
I know, they have five awards, but Ice Cream Joe from Valley Dairies getting the Community Service Award. And I was, I wanted, if council has no objection, I would like us to present a proclamation to him, as we did last year at Dockriff, and naming October twenty-sixth as Ice Cream Joe Day. The Valley Dairies has been such an integral part of this community for a lot of years. So, if no one has any objections, I'm gonna ask Mr. Kelly if he would write that resolution, or that proclamation for the meeting on the twenty-sixth. And because of that, because we are, because of the chamber dinner, we are proposing to move our agenda prep meeting to Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, if that's okay with everybody. I know it's a problem for Julie, because she teaches on Tuesdays, but I think we all want to attend it. The other really exciting thing is that the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program is getting the award for the nonprofit of the year, so that's really exciting for us in downtown Latrobe, that we have two of the five recipients, I think, coming out of the downtown. That's what I have for new business. Anything else for new, anybody else, what?
What day is the Ice Cream Joe, which day?
October twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we have our open requests for citizens, if anyone else wants to say anything about anything, please go to the microphone.
James Miller with Residency Sports Avenue. I would like to thank Ann Powell, Chief John Brazili, and Joe Bush and his people for coming over and putting, first of all, checking the safety issues regarding the tree in that area that's leaning over. Also, Ann and Joe went over there and checked the property, it was broken into several times. They have now placed padlocks on the doors that were unlocked, and I just wanted to thank them very much for what they've done. The safety issue hasn't been completed because of West Ben Power, they sent an engineer over saying that it was not, in essence, a safety hazard. So, I guess we're gonna have to wait till the tree falls down and maybe hurt somebody or something, and then action will be taken at that time. Also, we're making proclamations, and I think I had mentioned this one time, that we had Ron Wymer, who was so involved in the Latrobe Lord Avenue projects and things like that. I think it's time that we make a proclamation, and maybe even buy some cigarette containers.
Mr. Miller, we did a proclamation for Mr. Wymer, I can't remember when, we can certainly check.
Oh, we did that?
We have done a proclamation for Mr. Wymer, I believe it's when he kind of retired from Lord Avenue, and then, yeah, during the suspensment.
I wasn't aware of that, thank you very much.
Thank you, but good suggestion, he's great, he's done a lot of great things in the community. Anyone else? City Managers Report?
Just the fact that we're entering the very exciting time period, we're starting the twenty sixteen budget? And I'm looking for, last year, I haven't liked that.
They're in the, they're the, they're the finance committee, so they don't have to do the, yeah.
Actually...
They're the experts.
If they're okay, well, I've worked with the budget together, and it is balanced, but obviously, I think you all agree, last year, they found areas they had anyway. So, if you don't mind, I can, I know it's a little busy.
Thank you, Madeline.
All right. Make sure you load the...
Your involvement's here by obstinacy. Under the City Managers' Report, I have a couple things. First of all, I want to thank whoever brought this letter to the editor here for me. It's free, so I'm gonna read it, and, because I think it's cool. If those of you haven't seen it, it says, "I was recently visiting Ligonier to attend the USA mod at the Highland Games in Iowa with two young teenage children. We arrived in Latrobe on the Amtrak train from New York after seven P.M. at night. We'd assumed that we would be able to get a taxi to our hotel, Ligonier, but were just made to find that there was no service available. However, we were overwhelmed by the kindness shown to us by the local people of Latrobe who offered us shelter, and in particular, to a gentleman whom I only know as Jim, who heard our flight when he was in the video store and offered to drive us to our hotel, Ligonier. He pointed out the local landmarks as we went, and could not have been more friendly and helpful. I only hope that if any Americans were in the same position as us, that you would find the Scots as kind as the local people of Latrobe." And it is signed by a gentleman from Scotland. So, I think that's really cool. I mean, I'm not surprised, and those of us that live here know how friendly we are here in Latrobe, but to get that kind of notoriety from Scotland, I think, to whoever Jim is... Would you please step forward? Yes, the people from the train station to Ligonier, people from Scotland would like to know who you are and say thank you. Secondly, I don't know if most of you saw the article in the Latrobe Bulletin recently about the young woman named Victoria Pickett, who was just recently named the International Junior Miss, and her ties to the City of Latrobe. Her grandfather was Bob Ravino, who was the president of Teladine Alback, which is now Allegheny Technologies. They were, they lived over on Tacoma Avenue. Her mother was actually my best friend from high school, a local Latrobe family. This young lady is remarkable, the things that she's accomplished, and I've invited them, because of their local Latrobe roots, to come to a council meeting, so we could, you know, recognize her and hear a little bit about our story. There's always so much you hear about, you know, with young people and all the problems that there are, and I think we need to celebrate the success stories we have and this local connection to Latrobe. So, I'm really excited about that. More on that to come, I don't know when, she just got back from Paris in France, or Paris, France, and London with the International Junior Miss, and so, I'm gonna see what her schedule is like and invite her to one of our meetings. So, I think that's, I think that's me. Don't forget about the Halloween Parade on October thirty-first. And the last thing I want to talk about is how excited I am about, and if you've driven by Ligonier Street, but a big part of Lehigh's come down today. And I just want to say thank you to Chad Ireland and the management team over at Lehigh Specialty Metals and the parent company, Webco, and all of those folks that we've worked with over the last couple of months. Wayne and I have been talking to them with the help of, you know, April Copas, Joe Patraca, trying to get this building down, and they are community-minded, wonderful people to work with. So, on behalf of myself as the mayor, and I think all the residents of Latrobe, we want to say thank you to Lehigh for your, for your community involvement and recognizing how important this is to our revitalization and to the potential of the new school across the street. So, I think that's really exciting. Okay, that's all I have, except I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Kelly, because he has something he'd like to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, I'm going to step back from my solicitor's chair. You know, you talk about exciting times, I've been here for thirty-seven years of exciting times, and actually started coming to meetings before this building was... before this building was, was built and completed. I don't know exactly where it was, but it was somewhere upstairs above either Mozart House or Westmoreland Federal, but that's where council had their meeting. So I started with Gene McDonald at that point in time, and I was with him up until 1995, and then Gene retired, and then I was appointed solicitor until this year. But all good things have to come to an end, and believe me, it has been a good thing to represent the city of Latrobe for as long as I could. We've had three solicitors in the past 75 years. John Lightcap was 1940s to 1935, Gene from, or 55, rather, Gene from 1955 until 1995, myself, following him. It is with great reluctance, with great reluctance, but anticipation, that I am formally informing council that I do intend to retire from the practice of law, and that retirement will be effective January 31 of next year. And I am willing to help council in any way that is asked to find someone else to become the new solicitor. I'm sure you're going to have many applicants who recognize what a wonderful place this is. But again, it's been a pleasure, but it's time for me to turn over the reins to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. You know, it's, it's hard to describe when you think about three solicitors in 75 years. It just goes to show you, people, you know, you love Latrobe and you stay committed to it, and we appreciate all the years of service that you did, that you've given us. But since you're staying until January 31st, we're going to start planning your retirement party at the January meeting, so that's something y'all can look forward to. We'll have, we'll have some buddies here, and we'll celebrate Mr. Kelly's retirement. Now, maybe we'll have some slides from the early days. We put together a slideshow or something, but, but we'll talk more about that as time goes on, but, you know, on behalf of myself and all those that have come before me, thank you so much for your service. Your experience and your knowledge will be, will be greatly missed. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order?
Yeah, anybody noticed the path is actually being paved. It was up to about Screw Street yesterday when I ran on, so, and they were working on it again today, but...
You can't wait to run on that, can you?
Oh, it is.
Oh, yeah.
There was a man and his son riding bicycles, and a girl running, and a guy walking at all.
Oh, ready, and it's not even done yet. Awesome. Okay, if there's no other items for the meeting, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.